I'm Betty Ruther from the League of Women Voters of the New Brighton area, co-sponsoring the forum this evening with the League of Women Voters of Anoka, Blaine, and Coon Rapids. This is a new joint adventure for both our leagues, and we hope you in the audience find the evening informational and motivating to vote in our important upcoming election. The League of Women Voters is a 104-year-old organization, nonprofit, and nonpartisan. We do not support or oppose any political party or any candidate, whether they're running in either a partisan or nonpartisan race. The League does promote citizen voting and participation in our democratic process at local, state, and national levels. Thank you to the city of Columbia Heights for the use of this new lovely facility and providing us with cable coverage. Now, I would like to introduce our moderator for the evening, Mr. Wes Valkenant, a member of ABC League of Women Voters. And to the audience, please silence your phones for the benefit of our live and video audiences.
Thank you, Betty, and welcome, everybody, to the members in the room and to those of you that will be watching this over the cable connection and any other device that we'll be having it recorded on. Welcome to our Meet the Candidates, a joint League of Women Voters, New Brighton, and Blaine, Anoka, Coon Rapids forum for candidates who are running for Columbia Heights City Council. The top two vote-getters will be taking office in January 2025. Thank you to the candidates who are present this evening, Connie Biskins, Laurel Deneen, and Ali Farah, and to the city of Columbia Heights for making this event possible. This is a beautiful facility to be working in. Welcome to our audience at home and to our audience here in attendance. I am Wes Valkenant. I am a member of ABC League of Women Voters, and I'm a resident of Andover. I do not have a vote for this city council position. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. The League does help citizens become informed voters and advocates for important issues. That's what this forum is about, informing voters. If you're interested in the League, visit our ABC webpage at l w v a b c m n dot org. Persons of all genders, persons age 16 and older, are invited to join our organization. We will open this evening with two questions which we sent out to each candidate. I will direct those two introductory questions to the candidates before moving on to questions that we received from the public and those that we prepared for this forum. We're going to be rotating the order of answering the questions first, second, and third. Just for all of your sake, the very first question, Connie Biskins will be the first answerer, Ali Farah will be second, and Laurel Deneen will be third, and you can kind of keep rotating as we'll keep moving around with the three of them taking turns first, second, and third. We're going to be finishing tonight after we ask questions with the closing statements from the candidates. Answers to the submitted questions as well as the closing statements are limited to one minute, except as noted, and it's possible we may give an extra few, half a minute to a couple of the questions if they're a little more involved and complicated. All right, candidates, let's get started. Our first introductory question, which will be going to Connie Biskins, is, what is your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Thank you, Wes. First of all, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and I thank everyone here in the audience and those at home that are watching for being here. Motivation, very strong. I would love to continue serving the residents of Columbia Heights. I care deeply about Columbia Heights and I'm very passionate about improving the quality of your life, the residents. I have been a strong advocate for our residents and would continue doing so with your vote. My experience, I've been served, I served on the Planning Commission for the first two years, about nine, 10 years ago, and for the last seven and a half years, I've been your city council member. And I've also continued to volunteer in many events with different organizations in our city. I continue to do so today, and I know this city better than the one I grew up in. I've been here for 25 years now, and it's a great city, very eclectic mix of people. It's wonderful. And the many experiences, I've learned a lot, having been on the council now for seven and a half years. It's still a learning curve. There's so many new things that come up and so many new challenges that you're always learning. So, but with the experiences I've had in the past, I feel that I would be a strong candidate to continue on as your city council member for the next four years, and I humbly ask for your vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ali Farah, again, the opening question is, what is your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Voters and the audience, I, I'm running, I'm running because Columbia Heights is my home, this city, and this country have given me so much, and I need to step up and give back. I deeply connected with this community. I am one of the teachers in Columbia Heights Public Schools. I teach in North Park right now. My children go to this school, Columbia Heights Public Schools, high school, middle school, and elementary. I understand the needs of many of the underrepresented people who lives in Columbia Heights because I too come to here as an immigrant, and I too to learn the language and the government systems. And I enroll a college. I found a job. I know how hard, how hard, how hard and confusing it can be starting from scratch in a new country life. And I bring a unique perspective to the council table that will help our underrepresented citizens have a voice. I also, I also speak the language of money, I speak the language of people in our community that no one, no one else at this table speaks. I can communicate Somali, a little bit of Arabic, and English. So, people who lives in this city that currently have no way to communicate with this council will now have someone they can come to. I am a listener.
Ali, I'm just going to let you know, your time has expired. Thank you. Our third, our third person answering the question is Laurel Deneen. Laurel, what is your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Thank you, Wes, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on, for helping our community be informed and engaged voters, and thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you guys tonight. My name is Laurel Deneen, for those of you who don't know me. And the last few years, I have been engaged with our community through volunteering as part of local events such as Columbia Heights Pride and Every Meal, which is a program that passes out meals to underserved students in our area. I have also had the privilege to serve as a city planning commissioner, and during that, I have leveraged my professional experience in government planning and contracts to advise the council on various issues along with my fellow commissioners. My background as both an engaged citizen within our community through my volunteer efforts and my background in practical experience in government operations, combined with a deep passion for our community and outreach, I'm just committed to ensuring that all community voices are heard and represented, and that we move forward on important issues facing our cities together.
Thank you, Laurel. Our second introductory question will begin with Mr. Farah, and that question reads, what goals would you have as a Columbia Heights council member?
Through the community engagement, helping our citizens find the resolutions to the issues that matters to them around the public safety, affordable housing, education, parks, and any other challenge that they are facing. I will respond and will collaborate in my approach so that the people can feel comfortable to come to me and know they will hear and know that will help connect with them with the right or be able to solve their issues they raise. I truly represent the citizens of this city and be your voice at the table. Through the inclusion, helping our citizens, we do not currently have a voice, who do not currently have a voice, our city or government because the language and the cultural barriers. I founded the resources that, opportunities that they need and bring to their ideas and strength to the table to make our city government more representative of all these citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Ms. Deneen, again, the second question is, what goals would you have as a Columbia Heights council member?
Thank you. Well, the city of Heights is growing rapidly. All you have to do is take a drive down Central to see several places that are being redeveloped that will look different in the future. This is an exciting time for our city, but it's also a critical moment for us. As we move forward, we need to ensure that new development in the city supports both environmental sustainability and socially, and that they're socially equitable. It's important for the future of our city that new buildings are designed efficiently and designed with features that allow for stormwater treatment and retention. It's also important that buildings themselves are built to be as carbon neutral as possible by making efforts to reduce energy consumption from nonrenewable sources and improve efficiency. In addition to environmental sustainability, though, we need to ensure that development remains equitable for our local residents and businesses. So, our entire community should have the opportunity to thrive and improve their homes and businesses and not be pushed out by rising costs that come with development. That's a real thing that we're going to have to deal with in the future. And Columbia Heights has just long been a really welcoming place for first-time home buyers, and our diverse and close-knit community has to remain a priority as we move forward, and I think that's one of the things I would love to bring forward as a city council member.
Thank you. And second question going to Connie Biskins, what goals would you have as a Columbia Heights council member?
Oh, so many, you guys. There's so many exciting things going on in this city. First off, the number one priority for our city is to, we are planning and funding, looking for funds, and then build our new Public Works Building. It's a 60-year-old building. The rebar is disintegrating, and the support columns in the first floor, so it has to be replaced. That's a huge project. Second, we have the redevelopment, and I support redevelopment to increase our tax base to lessen the burden on our residents. Redevelopment, buildings, is what brings taxes in, not businesses, as others have often said. It's just, it's buildings. The Rainbow Site, right now, with the second concept that they brought before the council, is going to be worth over $200 million. And so, even if we do help them with financing for TIF, once that's ended, it'll be a huge taxing, tax input into our general fund that will help ease the tax burdens of our citizens. Same thing with the Medtronic site that's coming up. There's nothing planned there yet, but we've also, we've updated the comp plan, and we're looking at ideas, and we'll be asking the community for input. But again, that's another opportunity for our city to increase our tax base, so we need to be wise about how we develop that land. Also, a new, new thing has come up. MWMO, who is Mississippi Watership Management Organization, has approached the city about cleaning up Sullivan Lake. That has never come up in the last 25 years that I've lived here as a council, as a resident. And we are, currently, the council is exploring that, and I would be a huge advocate and support and push to find ways with this new partner to clean up that lake, because that lake feeds into the Mississippi. It has trash in it, it has high phosphorus levels in it, and so those are my top three that I would go for. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, before we move on, city staff gave me a little heads up, and I was just as guilty. The four of us with mics, we have our little buttons, and they just want us to make sure we press our button when we're not talking, so we should be seeing only a green one when we're talking and a red one when we don't, and I was messing up that way, too. So, all right, for everybody, we're moving into the unknown for the candidates. They got those first two questions. Now, we start to move into the questions that were submitted by the public to our League of Women Voter ABC website. We received 20 questions, some of which we were able to combine to use both questions in this forum, and that includes this next question, and it will be going first to Laurel Deneen. What issue would you consider a top priority if you were elected? What would you like to see the Columbia Heights Council take up first after the new council gets organized at the beginning of 2025?
Thank you for that question. That's a great question. It's multifaceted, so I'll try to address as many parts of that as I can. So, one of the most urgent challenges, I think, that Columbia Heights today is really facing is the balance between sustainable energy planning, infrastructure improvements, and responsible development. So, when we're looking ahead to projects like the reconstruction of Central Avenue or 40th, as well as overall city growth that we're experiencing here, it's crucial that we prioritize environmental sustainability and ensure that development benefits our entire community. Energy planning is essential when it comes to reducing our carbon footprint. New developments need to incorporate renewable energy and efficiency measures. Infrastructure projects like Central and 40th need to address both functionality and environmental impact. And so, ultimately, all this growth needs to ensure that Columbia Heights remains affordable and accessible to our residents. And I think what I would like to see really addressed first is something that's already in the works that I'm super excited about. Many of you have probably been to meetings that were discussing Central and 40th, and I really encourage, sorry. Okay, I was just really encourage you guys to visit those meetings where you can see what plans are on the docket for those.
Thank you, Laurel. We'll turn to Connie Biskins. It was a long question. Again, I'll repeat. What issue would you consider a top priority if you were elected? What would you like to see the Columbia Heights Council take up first after the new council gets organized at the beginning of 2025?
Sorry, turn on the green button. As far as top prior, my issues, there's so many, like I listed before, Public Works Building, redevelopment, Sullivan Lake, we got some major projects coming up. However, what I'd really like to start out with our first year is a goal-setting session with the council and the staff. We did that two years ago, and because we're a team. I have my ideas, but we work together as a team, so I'd really like to have that set up, so then we, together, focus on the issues that we all feel is important and work forward from there. But I still support the Public Works Building, really push hard for Sullivan, and I will push hard for those during the goal-setting session. But again, it's a teamwork between us and the staff to set our goals for the future work that we will be doing.
Thank you, Connie. And we turn the same question to Ali Farah. Again, what issue would you consider a top priority if you were elected? What would you like to see the Columbia Heights Council take up first after the new council gets organized at the beginning of 2025?
Thank you. My top priority is the community engagement, public safety, affordable housing. And when it comes to community engagement, I would like to bring community together, police and families, and there are issues. When I was door knocking, I noticed that, so I would like to bring, the first thing I'm going to do, I'm going to bring the community together and the police. When it comes to affordable housing, I would like to see more apartments in our community. Also, when it comes to education, I would like to work with the school board, and I would like to do, I would like to invest the quality of education for all students. And I would like to, as a teacher, since I teach at Columbia Heights Public Schools, I support also the school boards to provide the quality education for all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. My goof this time. All right, once again, this is going to Connie. Connie, the question that is sent in to us reads, there is a noticeable lack of proactive code enforcement throughout the city. What are your thoughts about the perception the city has become lax on proactively enforcing code violations?
This is a big topic right now. I drive around the city a lot, and there's lots of things I find. Code enforcement, yes, has been difficult to enforce because we had no teeth. Recently, the council, I believe, just passed the first hearing. We worked on this for a while because staff has been sending letters and letters and letters to people, and what often happens is then, once they don't comply, it goes to the courts, and the courts don't want these cases anymore, and they've asked us to find a different alternative, so we've looked at what other cities do. So, now, with this new code enforcement, it will have teeth. It will have hefty fines. First hit, second hit, third hit, and then it goes, then they can lose their license, they can lose their CUP if they have, like, for instance, an auto business has to have a conditional use permit, they don't comply, and fix whatever they need to fix, they could jeopardize using that. So, we are in the process of tightening that up and making sure people follow the rules. So, yes, it's a very important situation, and I'm so happy that it's been worked on, and I will keep pushing for that and enforcing once I get back on for a third term. Thank you.
Thank you. Ali Farah, the same question to you. There is a noticeable lack of proactive code enforcement throughout the city. What are your thoughts about the perception the city has become lax on proactively enforcing code violations?
Well, thank you. I don't know a lot about code violations, so I would like to find out more information about this, and I'm a big believer that if the person did not follow the rules, then they have to, they have to be, they have to, they have to have a consequence for that. So, I'm going to leave with that question.
Thank you. Laurel Deneen, same question to you. There's a noticeable lack of proactive code enforcement throughout the city. What are your thoughts about the perception the city has become lax on proactively enforcing code violations?
Sure, thanks you. That's a really good question. I know that that's been on a lot of people's minds lately. I will say, as a person who works in contracts and looks at language all day, these policy changes that Connie mentioned earlier are really, it's going to allow us to take a more proactive approach to that, so I'm very much looking forward to taking a look at more of those changes, seeing how effective they are in the future, and if we need to tighten anything up anywhere. I think it's really easy to do things that are against code on your personal property without even realizing that you're doing it, so having the ability to go out there, give you a warning, and then, you know, there will be consequences. You know, everybody hates to have to pay a fine, but it's part of keeping our city beautiful and strong. So, I think that the code, the policy change within the city is going to help a lot to address that, but I look forward to taking a further look at it and seeing how it goes.
Thank you. Timers and candidates, on the next one, I'm going to give up to 90 seconds if you need it. This question is actually a combination of two that were of a similar vein, and you might need the extra time potentially. It goes to Ali Farah first. What will you do to make our city and our city government more inclusive? And additionally, what steps will you take to ensure city information is accessible to all residents regardless of language or physical barriers they may face?
Thank you. Inclusive and equality. I believe that, and I would like to, I would like to see more about engage, community engagement. I would like to talk to the police, making connections with public safety, talking with our people, their concerns. I would like to know what their concern is and resolve the issues that they may, they may raise, because every challenge or every problem has a solution. I would like to talk to the families. When I, I noticed that when I was talking, knocking on doors the last time, I noticed that there were some issues about the people we're talking about, so I would like to get a solution for that also as well, so I would like to leave it right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurel Deneen, I'm going to, again, repeat this one, 90 seconds if you need it. What will you do to make our city and our city government more inclusive? And additionally, what steps will you take to ensure city information is accessible to all residents regardless of language or physical barriers they may face?
Sure. Well, one of the things I would love to do is, it's very niche, I'm part of the Pride Planning Board here in Columbia Heights, and what I would like to do is to start to see maybe city booths happen at our community events to make sure that people are aware of what's going on in the community, how they can get involved with government, whether it's through a commission or whether it's through city government. We want to make sure that people know of those opportunities and that no matter who you are or what your background is, we want you and we want your voice heard. And also, we do have a city newsletter. I'd love more people to know about it. It comes in several languages, and I think that our mayor has actually done a lot of work to make sure that that's inclusive as possible and to get it into several different languages so that people can have access to information about what's going on in their community in their own native language. So, I think a lot of it is about education. It's about getting out there as part of the city and making sure that the community knows that your city government is not someplace that sits on high, it's someplace that's accessible and wants to hear your voice. So, that's what I would strive to do.
Thank you. And then Connie Biskins, the same question to you, again, a combined two questions. What will you do to make our city and our city government more inclusive? And additionally, what steps will you take to ensure city information is accessible to all residents regardless of language or physical barriers they may face?
Thank you for that question. Accessibility and inclusiveness, our police department has done a wonderful job in hiring people from all different backgrounds, women, and they've done a great job, and they're getting, they're working really well with the schools and meeting the students there, and that's kind of how they're pulling in the new candidates with kids that graduate. We also, through our mayor and also our communications department, have provided the website in multiple languages. The mayor pushed to make sure that we have no gender bias in our policies and our ordinances, and there's, we're still working on it because we still find things that kind of, they're biased, so they need to change. Let's see, I also, as far as accessibility, the communications department, our event planner, does a wonderful job in providing multiple events throughout the city that does a wonderful job in providing multiple events throughout the city that are welcoming to everybody. Our police department has Coffee with a Cop. Tonight, they're having, I'm gonna mispronounce this, but I believe it's Kneefa with a Cop over at Golden Nuts, which is a phenomenal restaurant. They go to many different parts of our city to talk to people. And then the third thing are IT improvement. IT, eight years ago, I could not even do my email at midnight. Midnight, it was shut down. We have hired an IT director and they have, did a five-year plan. And there's multiple things that they're doing to make sure communication gets out to our restaurants using lots of different models and medias. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question is kind of in sort of the same vein, but a little different take on things. Goes first to Laurel Dunne. "How will you be accessible to citizens who have city concerns?"
Let me press that button. That would probably be the first step, is to make sure you can hear me. It's a great question because everybody wants to know how they can make a difference. And the great thing is you can have conversations. One thing about me is you can check out my website, laurealfarhites.com. I have an email on there. I check every day. I will get back to you. I have a phone number. You can call me. You can leave a message if I'm at work and I will call you back. But that's one way that I look to make sure that I have different ways for people to contact me, no matter what their working hours are, no matter what their abilities are, that they can email me, they can, they can send me a phone call, they can leave me a message. But my goal is to be open and transparent as possible. And then additionally, I attend a lot of community events. I help plan a lot of community events. So I'm always out there and I encourage you, if you see me, to come and say hi to me and ask me any questions you have. And then also, if elected, I would love to hold office hours where people could drop in and discuss the things that are important to them, and I could bring that forward as part of city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Connie Biskin, to you. "How will you be accessible to citizens who have city concerns?"
Right now, people can call me, they can email me. I attend many events as Laurel Dunne does, but I attend lots of events. I'm accessible throughout the day most of the time. And I will get back to you as soon as I can, as soon as possible. Usually within that day, I get back to people with some type of response. And part of my, part is the role of a city council member is you're liaison between the city residents and the staff. So my job is to hear your concerns and then to bring it to the appropriate staff who hopefully can solve the issue. It's no guarantee that we can always fix everything, but at least your voice has been heard. The issue has been addressed and it's staff that usually does the jobs of fixing things. I can't plow a driveway, I can't plow an alley. So the staff does that. So I'm, I try to be as very accessible and I miss door knocking right now. I had a serious injury a couple of years ago that I can't door knock now. But I miss talking to people and being out there because there's so many things I could promote for our city out there. And so I apologize for that, but again, thank you.
Thank you. And Ali Farah, "How will you be accessible to citizens who have city concerns?"
Yes, the people, community can call me, they can email me, they, I have a website right now. I provided my flyers and I talked, I was door knocking. I provided more than 5,000, about 6,000 flyers. My information is there, my email, my email, my websites, my contact information, people can contact me. And if you visit my website, you will see right away on the corner right there, you're gonna see my phone, I believe it's my phone, my email. So that's how people will contact me.
Thank you. And moving on, this question will go to Connie Biskin first. "How would you improve services to youth and seniors in Columbia Heights?"
Number one for youth and adults, maybe seniors, soccer fields. I've been trying to push for soccer fields for the last eight years. We've been waiting for the master plan and also money to do that. We're hoping in the next year or two that I would strongly promote is revamping our Park and Recs program so that we meet more needs. And the high school kids, teenagers are the ones that need more activities. We do well with the young folks, with the little ones, but we need some really strong programming for our youth. And then the seniors, I've been attending a lot of the senior events. They just hired a wonderful senior director and she used to be a travel agent. And she does a phenomenal job right now for our seniors for activities and outings and programs. So anything that can help her do her job even better, I would support.
Thank you. Ali Farah, same question to you. "How would you improve services to youth and seniors in Columbia Heights?"
I would like to do more programs for after-school activities. We already have a lot of activity after schools and in our schools, so I will endorse that, I will support that. I will support that for product educations and to do more. But that, when it comes to seniors, I, I know we don't have more spaces in our Columbia Heights. I would like to build small houses for seniors and help you with that way.
Thank, thank you. Laurel Dunne, same question to you. "How would you improve services to youth and seniors in Columbia Heights?"
Well, as a huge Minnesota United fan, I'm really on board with the new soccer field. We have a plethora of baseball diamonds here. And while I love baseball as well, there are definitely diversity of sports that we need within our programs as far as Parks and Rec. And I'd love to work on expanding those. I also wanna put in a plug for our youth commission. It's a really exciting program that high school youth can enter into to serve on all of our commissions in the city. And they can get a lot of experience about city government, about how their city around them works. It's really nebulous when you're a kid. You don't think about how things get done. And you get to learn so much. And I've really seen some kids really flourish and just have a great time. So I'd really like to put that out there as some ideas if you guys have high school kids at home. For seniors, I wanna make sure that we are providing some information on what grants they could get to like have more programming in their places that they're living or just in general. I know that Connie knows a lot about our senior programming. I know a little bit less, but I would love to see that get more expanded as well.
Thank you. We're going to switch gears a little bit to economic questions. And the first one of those, I believe, goes to Ali Farah. "What will you do to help small businesses and promote commercial development in Columbia Heights?"
Well, thank you. I, the way I see our, our city is that I believe that we need more commercials. We need more commercials. We see our property taxes. We need more commercials, that's why. And then we can reduce our property tax that we, and I don't see we have more commercial, we don't have businesses in here. I have seen people coming to you, to me and saying that we would like to open businesses in our city. So I would like to get more commercial business in our city.
Thank you, Mr. Farah. And we turn to Laurel Dunne with the same question. "What will you do to help small businesses and promote commercial development in Columbia Heights?"
That's a great question. Again, we have so many good ones tonight. I would say that one of the big things about small businesses that we, A, need to help them, we have programs and just letting them know about the programs, like the facade improvement program for small businesses. And we also can promote and try to get more funding for programs that help with infrastructure within a small business. If you're a small restaurant who needs a new hood or who needs a new oven or who needs to have some money to make sure that you can make city code and make sure that you are a healthy place to be, then that's something that we should promote. Also, for big development that we have a lot of here, I think a lot, I think we have a lot of attention right now on some spots within the city. Just making sure that people who come here are coming here for the right reasons. They're coming to provide a variety of housing. They're coming here to provide businesses that will really serve our community. So just making sure that you're working in partnership and letting them know how to, how the city expects business to be done is a great part of what the city council does.
Thank you, Ms. Dunne. And we turn to Connie Biskin with the same question. "What will you do to help small businesses and promote commercial development in Columbia Heights?"
First off, when I first came on the council, one of the ideas that I had was when I asked the city managers, can we have a facade grant program for small businesses to clean up the look along Central Avenue? And I was only asking for five grand at the time, thinking it was, you know, a big idea, might cost money. The staff came back huge. They put in $50,000 to help our businesses fix up their doors, their windows, their signage, paint the front. So that went really well. We've done well over a dozen businesses at this point, so I'm very proud of that. In addition to that, the businesses have access to security cameras that the police department is in charge of to put into their buildings to help the front and the back of their buildings be more secure. I would love it if we could get the county, if we could put pressure on the county to do more with their small business programs, to go door-to-door to meet with our businesses. Oftentimes, small business owners are very busy. They can't go to the county, they can't get to the library. We need some resources to go to them, find out what they need for computers, financing, all that type of stuff. The second thing that I just spoke with recently, it was an idea I had where we have a welcoming package for the city, for the new businesses that come into our city. Thank you.
Anne, we'll have to end it there, Ms. Biskin. But we're coming to another economic question and maybe you can continue in that one. The next question will begin actually with Laurel Dunne. "Everything in life is expensive. Can you share your philosophy on taxation and spending?"
Sure. Well, I can talk specifically about property tax. I know that that's the biggest thing that's on everybody's mind at all times. What is our property tax gonna do this year? I think it's important to remember that our taxes contribute to a lot of local funding for initiatives like safety, parks, libraries, public works. However, I really understand as a homeowner, the frustration associated with increasing taxes. The unfortunate reality is that the Met Council subsidy is going down by 11% this year because our home values are rising. We are becoming more popular. And that leaves a bigger burden on us as taxpayers. I'm thrilled about the opportunity to join a city council and a mayor, though, who really are proactive in seeking external funding for large projects such as the new city works, Public Works building, and who are trying their best to make sure that we're partnering with major infrastructure projects so that those costs don't automatically reflect in your taxes each year. And I would really love to be part of a council that's looking for and lobbying for increased funding from alternate sources other than just the tax base.
Thank you, Laurel. And we turn to Connie Biskin, same question. "Everything in life is expensive. Can you share your philosophy on taxation and spending?"
Yes, it's very expensive. Our Public Works building initially was planned to be a $15 million project. And because after, after COVID, after a few years, it's now a $25 million project plus. And that's in today's money, it's not when we start building it. Unfortunately, our city only has 5% commercial properties, so therefore the taxes fall, the bulk of taxes fall on our residents. And it's very hard making decisions about what we need and what we can afford as a council member. I support large buildings that way. A lot of people, that's unpopular, but those large buildings, $200 million redevelopment is gonna bring in a ton of tax money to help our residents deal with taxes and hopefully lower them in the time. The other thing is sometimes we have to put things on hold. We can afford to do the Public Works building right now, but Park and Recs and the Mersham Hall desperately needed, 90-year-old building. That's gonna be a few years down the road now because we can't ask the taxpayers to pay for another anywhere from 10 to 50 million for the parks and what they decide to do with rec buildings. So it's very tough to decide what to do.
Thank you. And same question to Mr. Ali Farah, that is, "Everything in life is expensive. Can you share your philosophy on taxation and spending?"
Yes, I, I would like to reduce the proper, property tax. And to do that, we need to get more commercial businesses in our city. More business, that's what we need so we can take off the burden of the, our property taxes. So that is where I would like to see, and that's what I'm coming.
Thank you. This will be our final question, and of course, closing statements will follow. Final question will start with Connie Biskin's, and that is, "Columbia Heights has changed a lot in recent years. Where do you see heights in 10 years? And how would you help to achieve that vision?"
I see a wonderful city in 10 years. We're doing reconstruction on Central Avenue, one to increase the safety, because there's 500 accidents in the last 10 years, serious accidents on that streets. But the other is to bring it, the city to life, to allow people to feel safe walking down the streets, walking their dogs, walking to the theater. I see active new residents or new restaurants and businesses coming in and seeing our downtown just full of life, where people feel comfortable walking down and feel safe. That's what I see. I don't see a lot of, you know, we'll have a few big buildings, but I also wanna keep our small-town feel. I wanna still feel, see people well-connected like they are today. We've had over a 60% turnover in population in the last 10 years. And the people, the new people are still connecting with each other. We still have that feel, so that's what I see.
Thank you. Ali Farah, "Columbia Heights has changed a lot in recent years. Where do you see heights in 10 years? And how would you help to achieve that vision?"
Oh, that's a fantastic question, and thank you. We are a diversity community and we speak 39 languages in our city. So where I see, and I think that in 10 years from now, our future, I would like to see more businesses in, coming to our community. I would like to see more apartments we need to build because more and more and more people are coming to our community. And we need to get the resources that a lot of, I, as an immigrant, I came to this country without knowing a lot of language. So now, this year, and last year and this year, we see more and more immigrants coming to our community, our, our city. And I would like to get more resources for them, and that is how our city will be prospering.
Thank you. And Laurel Dunne, "Columbia Heights has changed a lot in recent years. Where do you see heights in 10 years? And how would you help to achieve that vision?"
Well, it's certainly an exciting time. We have a lot of new projects going on. I think the redesign of the university is gonna have a big impact. When you look out here, you can see this is a thoroughfare from downtown to the highway. And we wanna make sure that that's not what Columbia Heights is. We wanna make sure this is a place where people wanna spend time, where people wanna have families, where people wanna walk down the street to Dairy Queen and then stop at the movie theater. You know, we wanna make sure that our diverse, we have 39, is that what you said, 39 languages in this city? That's amazing. I wanna have cultural touchstones that really bring out the beauty of this close-knit, amazingly diverse community. And I can't wait to see that happen. I think with this development and with our focus on small businesses, we can absolutely do that. And as part of city council, I wanna be part of bringing policy forward that will really put our city front and center as well as our diverse community.
Thank you. Well, if you all look close, you can probably get that beautiful sunset right in my glasses here. All right. We're gonna do the closing statements. Ali Farah, you get to get us started with your closing statement.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Ali Farah. I, well, I, my name is Ali Farah. Thank you all for coming to this meeting tonight. My name is Ali Farah. I was knocking on doors for probably last three months, last three months, last three months. And people, and I'm probably, I'm gonna knock doors until the end of this election. I will work for you very, very hard. I will try my best to serve for you. I work for you. So I'm asking your votes, and that is my closing statement.
Thank you. Will you go with your statement now, Laurel Dunne?
Thank you very much. I wanna thank the League of Women Voters again for having us. This is such a great experience to just be here and answer questions with all my fellow candidates and with everybody here. My name is Laurel Dunne again. Laurelforhights.com is my website. You can learn more about the platforms that I would like to bring forward as your city council member at that time. Also, plug, there is a pride celebration this weekend at Kodiak Park, and I'd love to see you all there. I'd love to have conversations with all of you and have that opportunity to get to meet all of you. I hope that you've learned a little bit about me tonight and that what you saw, you liked, and I hope that I can have your vote in November. But I just wanted to say that I appreciate that you all took your time out to either be here, watch this. Not everybody loves listening to city council politicians talk about this stuff, but it's really important. So I appreciate you all being here.
Thank you. And finally, Connie Biskin, your closing statement, please.
I wanna thank everyone that came here tonight to attend the forum and for the League of Cities again for putting this on. I love this city. I love serving the residents of this city. It's been a great challenge and privilege to have done it in the last seven and a half years, and I would like to continue again for the next four. So I would love to have your vote. I know I would be a strong advocate. I am always available. I try my hardest to help with issues that come up with residents, and I also enjoy working with the challenges of redevelopment. Can we save Sullivan Lake? Can we build a proper building down it or the Rainbow Site to make in one so that it's, brings in a ton of tax money, but also that people will learn to love? There's all different ways and site creations and designs that they're putting in there I think people will be very pleased with. Again, if you wanna get ahold of me, the best is to go to my website, connibiskins.com. It is connected to my Facebook page, my Instagram page, has my phone number on there, my email. If you have any questions or challenges for me or questions, please contact me. I would love to talk to you. Thank you.
Well, thank you to our candidates this evening for sharing their views with the public through your participation in this Meet the Candidates forum. Thank you to those of you that are in attendance here tonight at the Columbia Heights City Council chambers. We appreciate your participation as well. And thank you to the New Brighton League and the ABC League volunteers who helped to make this evening a success. As Betty Ruther noted to those of us that were here in person at the beginning, the League of Women Voters has supported informed voting for over 100 years. In the year 2024, we have many options for how we vote. Please exercise your right to vote. For more election information, visit the Minnesota Secretary of State's website at minvotes.org or go to the League of Women Voters Minnesota website. at minvotes.org or go to the League of Women Voters Minnesota website, vote411." Thank you all and good evening.